I guess, I'm gonna presume that H-CAM got this. So, anyway, welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Monday, February 22nd. We started off with an executive session this morning, or this evening. We're now into the public session. We're gonna have a couple of public hearings tonight. The most important one is the public session on proposed amendments to zoning bylaw and the zoning maps. I'd like to thank H-CAM for taping it. We're missing a couple of members, and they can look at the tape to make sure that they know what they missed, so that's always helpful to the board. We're gonna open the public hearing for proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw at this time. This is a public hearing. We will kinda talk at it in the order that's on the agenda. We'll probably have comments and questions from, let's start the public first, and then the Planning Board members. We'll see how that works on the first couple, and if that doesn't work so well, we'll reverse that order through that. But it is a public hearing. We're looking to get comments from the public. We really wanna hear what people have to say. But I ask you to be really short and concise, and if you, you know, if you just wanna say, "Ditto, what he just said," that's okay, and just, we'll understand where it's at. It is a, we've got a lot to go through, but we will take the time to get through all these. If not today, we'll continue it on. So, anyway, let's start with doggy daycare facilities. And I think there are copies over here for people who haven't gotten them, hopefully you have, in the doggy daycare. John, do you wanna start off with a quick explanation of what we got there?
Yeah, the doggy daycare came to us from Mike Shepherd and his office, where, the way it was written to us. Doggy daycare questions continually arise due to the changing demographics, and more and more households have two homeowners working full-time jobs. The need to provide professional daycare for the dogs, much like child daycare, has expanded significantly. We have a couple in town that we know of, these, that were permitted about 10 years ago as a home business. I suspect it could be, it could be a use by special permit in some of the larger residential districts. We may also want to include the option in professional business districts as well as, although not downtown. The use could be permitted with specific conditions based on, primarily on the neighborhood input, but would include limitations on hours operations, no overnight, traffic parking, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason why this is brought up is that we had, sort of like with the solar issue several years ago, where there was just no regulation at all, and we just wanted to actually put some boundaries on it, just in case they, it came up, and just to save the inspectional crew having to go into uncharted waters. So, we, we actually looked at this one second. We actually did the Bay Path one first, to actually give us some guidance. But, just, you know, all of, we took into consideration all of those things, that we wanted to stress that there was gonna be no overnight, and we took into consideration traffic and parking, number of dogs that are boarded, and if they were inside or out, and the supervision, and most importantly, sanitation. And if you look at the, at the draft article, it's, a dog daycare facility may be permitted in any zoning district upon grant of a special permit from the Board of Appeals, subject to requirements set forth in this section. The doggy daycare facility should be located, containing a minimum of three acres. There shall be not more than 12 dogs at the facility at any one time, the hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The outside area for dogs shall be enclosed by a solid six-foot-tall fence. When the dogs are outside, they should be on the premises and under constant supervision. All dog waste shall be contained and legally removed in a timely manner. Adequate odor control measures shall be implemented, and adequate measures shall be implemented to ensure that noise impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods are mitigated, and there shall be no on-street parking. There should be no overnight care for boarding of dogs. There should be no dog daycare activity without an occupancy permit issued by the Director of Municipal Inspections. The initial occupancy permit shall remain in force for a period of two years from the date of issue, provided that the ownership of the premises has not changed. Thereafter, permits may be issued by the Director of Municipal Inspections for a succeeding two-year period, provided that the use continues to comply with the provisions of the chapter in the special permit. Occupancy permits should not be transferable upon change of ownership. So we tried to hit all of those factors that we thought people would be concerned with.
Okay. Questions, comments, input from members of the public? Mr. Shepherd?
Yeah, as was pointed out, this was my article. As you probably know, and the obvious fact is, with more and more people working, they gotta provide a place for their dogs. And I, for example, bring the dog over to a place in Westboro where I suspect some of you do as well. She goes over there once a week for daycare, just to get socialized with the dogs, 'cause otherwise, she doesn't get along with sheep very well. On the other hand, we just came back from a vacation, and all my kids got kids up in the row, and it isn't likely to give the dog to them to take care of, so you gotta find a place. So, this particular place actually boards them overnight as well, so we did that. So, over the last three or four years, we've got a lot of calls about people requiring us to whether they can do it. And I said, "No, you can't do it." "Oh, why can't I do it?" "'Cause we don't have a bylaw that covers it." And, and so I thought, and I think Zach did a great job by putting these parameters on it, with the, you know, you can do it in any zoning district you want, but the lot's gotta be three acres. That eliminates probably two-thirds of the zoning districts right there, just by definition. The good thing about the special permit is, a buddy's getting invited to come, maybe invited within 300 feet, the Board of Appeals, if they're, they can award the special permit if they can warrant it. They can also put additional conditions on it.
Yes, me too.
But the important thing is, if we have issues with the facility, we'll send them back to the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals could rescind it, just as quickly. So it isn't like, you know, you got it now, you can do anything you want. That isn't the case. But it was more about having something there so that we could regulate it. Otherwise, it's chase the people, it's set up these little upskiers. Yeah, it was my thing.
Okay. Sir? Name and address, so that we get that for the record.
Yeah, we will begin with Ben Bryak. Just a couple of questions. I follow the gist of it. So, on the, on the last paragraph 11, it says the initial permit shall remain in force for two years, as long as the premises' ownership has not changed. Does that mean even if there's violations within the first two years, you could still stay in force?
Look, if there are violations, as there is with any other special permit, they'll be referred to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals, there'd be a public hearing, a buddy's are invited.
Just did you just that?
Yeah. And, and the Board of Appeals can say, "Okay, you're all done, you can't do it anymore." Or they could put additional conditions. And the, the big point is, the director, buddy, everybody that has any direct involvement gets to say, "It has an opportunity to do it." That was the big thing.
So, a complaint would be enough to...
A complaint would, a complaint would require an investigation by us. We'd look at it. If it was warranted, we could issue a cease and desist order. The, the dog plays could, would then have to stop. They could appeal it, back to the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals could then hear all the stuff, and you get to say, and...
Okay.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of protection.
Just a follow-on. So normally, the way these things are written, you don't have to put all that down in writing in the bylaw of how that process works?
Well, it's all in there, but that's how zoning works.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, Kathleen Woburn, 11 Turnbridge Lane. My concern with the daycare and the animal shelters is the factor of the noise. I live on Indian Brook, and I'm retired, and if I hear dogs barking, my quality of life is gonna really tank. So I know it says here that you ensure that the noise impact is mitigated, but I just wonder, really, can you realistically do that?
How, how do it is, is, you know, the biggest parameter is the size of a lot, the three-acre lot. By definition, that's gonna put it away from a lot of people. The ideal scenario is, is a place like Overnair, Pelsham District, where there are no other neighbors. Our dog, for example, goes to that Linda's Doggy Play Land in Westboro, right on the corner, as you do in Westboro. Fortunately for her, she has no neighbors directly around, so there's nobody to complain, no harm, no foul. Ideally, we'd have something like that. If they applied to the Board of Appeals for the special permit, and the neighbors would get invited anyway, and they say, "I'm really concerned about the noise," then the Board can make them do additional things to placate the noise, like keep them inside all the time, or whatever. But the important thing is, just get it out there. It doesn't automatically guarantee everybody gets it, and there are controls, so...
So it doesn't automatically guarantee that whatever they say is good enough for the noise control is good enough?
What's the Board of Appeals, and they're doing the special permit? It would be the authority on it. And I suspect your question on noise is exactly what the town meeting discussion is gonna be about.
And keep in mind, this comes up again at town meetings. Should the Planning Board vote to oppose this, the same discussion will come up at town meeting.
Was, let me ask the question a little bit. Did Zach look at other ways of mitigating the noise? I mean, I see you had some of these that...
Well, you know, it's, I also bring my dog a couple days a week. I go to a, a small place up in, just over the Upton Line, and what I, what I've noticed when I bring my dog in, anywhere from 30 to 90 seconds, maybe tops, there'll be, that she probably has about a dozen dogs, maybe 15 dogs, and as soon as my dog gets in there, she'll, she'll bark a little bit, they'll bark a little bit, and find out where the pecking order is, and then it all comes down. And there's really, there's, there's not much until the next dog comes. And that's why you have to get your dog in before 9:00, you know, it's, you know, from 7:00 to 9:00.
It's just my experience, it's been the dog owners don't notice dogs bark.
Yeah.
Dog owners notice it a lot, so...
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Roland Janbergs from Turnbridge Lane. I do a lot of walking in the area. I like to walk. The Ashland Animal Hospital is one of the areas I used to walk around a lot. They are fairly removed from anything else. They're kind of in a business district, they're not gonna be driven around. But you can hear those dogs barking for a long distance, and they wind up barking not for a couple minutes establishing pecking order, but for hours at a time. So much so that I know that walking along the, I'm walking along the river here, this is, this is, I guess, I guess it's the Hockington River, or Sudbury River, or something. But I'm walking one side of the river and coming through town and walking back, and the whole time, I'm hearing dogs barking. Now, it may be different because it's an animal hospital, maybe they're barking because they're sick, but it is noticeable.
Yeah.
I also have a question about the 7:00 to 6:00, is that weekdays only, or is that weekends also weekdays?
Weekdays only.
Okay, thank you.
I think this we had, yeah.
Go ahead.
Bill Proctor, I'm the Animal Control Officer for the town. To answer your questions on the barking, as far as the veterinary place, you've got dogs that are basically kennelled there. They're in cages.
Okay.
So now they're fence-biting, they're, you know, so, it, that's a whole different thing than what these people would have. We have dogs in town, and there's no one that hates barking dogs more than I do, believe me. But we have single dogs that bark. They would also, like, wouldn't they be, wouldn't they fall under my laws, wouldn't they fall under my, my laws too, so there would be fines involved if there's barking? There would be, you know, we would investigate, same as the police would investigate. You know, we're not gonna let them bark. I mean, that's, you know...
Thank you. I mean, the quality of life is...
Oh, yeah, no, and believe me, I, I understand, but like I said, believe me, the dog barking is one of the worst things that we have to control. And single dogs sometimes are worse than, you know, many dogs. So, you know, I don't think it's gonna be a problem with that, but it's, you know, with the kenneling, like at the animal hospital, first of all, there's probably 20, 25 dogs down there. They're kept in kennels outside. They've got outside kennels, they've got inside kennel, they're barking, you know, it's a, it's just a whole different operation.
That's, that's what we...
Yeah, you know, I mean, we're talking, you know, a handful of dogs in a, in a place playing, basically.
Okay. Let's kinda move along. Any Planning Board members have questions?
I just have a comment, that if that is supposed to be Monday through Friday, it should be specified, because weekends are a whole nother story when people are home and wanna sleep in. And even within that, I, I really have some questions on 7:00 a.m. That is awful early, or...
We have to drop off before work.
Well, they might drop off before work, and up until a certain hour, they have to have an indoor area where the animals can be contained, so they can go out and start barking at 8:00 or something. But I, I'm, you know, I'm just anticipating that that's the kinda thing that might bar the neighbors, just start to hear dogs barking at 7:00 a.m. It's great if you're going to work at 7:00.
So, the intent of 3:00 was to make weekends?
Yeah, that's right.
Or weekdays?
Is it only?
Yeah, we thought it was weekdays only, I doubt, it's...
Okay. Frank?
Point about procedure. I guess you guys haven't seen this, John. We got feedback from Town Council that addresses some, some concerns, mentioning different things here that we just got a minute ago, so...
Yeah, we didn't get that, so...
We will, we will be meeting again on the exact final wording. You know, this is tonight, we wanna make sure we get everyone that was notified from the public, we get that input for sure. We now have Town Council's word too, and, you know, we will, we'll merge all that in probably at the next meeting, just because, otherwise, we'll not get through here tonight at all.
About the specific one, I have a question...
Go ahead.
From Mr. Shepherd. Appreciate your work. You said earlier that people called you and asked about having doggy daycare, and I said, "Because it's not in the bylaws, you can't." Isn't that kind of, kind of a negative?
Probably 10 years ago, we had a guy come in to the Board of Appeals, and I said, "You can't do it." So I'll go to the Board of Appeals, they'll fix it. He went to the Board of Appeals, and because we didn't have it in the bylaw, he needed a variant, used variant, which was really hard to get. And the Board of Appeals said essentially, "No, we're not gonna give it." 10 years ago. The day after, I got a call from the Chair of the Board of Appeals, and said, and during the course of the hearing, the neighbors were all far... This, this thing exists today. Everybody knows, I think, where it is, and we've never had a complaint about it. He says, "Why don't you have them apply as a home business?" Which is kind of a stretch. But because, at the Board of Appeals hearing, there was no neighborhood opposition, in fact, the entire neighborhood came out and said, "Let this guy do it." I said, "Well, we'll say, yeah, it was a home business." Knowing at the time I did it, I was pretty new at the job, but I was also willing to take the chance, because, again, everybody loved the guy. And we still do it today, so we've had zero complaints.
Okay.
But I didn't wanna make the habit of doing it that way. That's the only other alternative.
Okay.
That was, that was the only thing I wanted to mention, is, I mean, having this byline here gives us a better control of having a doggy daycare facility, whether it's done legally, not legally, it would now have to be done legally, and we have the control. And that's why we need to move forward with this.
Yes.
Sorry to bother you all. Does any, is anybody driving an Audi A6? Wish I were. No?
No.
I'll take it.
Yeah, I mean, it's blocking someone's driveway, so...
Does it say somebody not driving it anymore?
All right, sorry for the interruption.
Okay. Let's, oh, go ahead.
So I, I'm, I guess, a little confused. If we're trying to solve a problem of convenience and supply, or if we're really trying to address sort of zoning, all sorts of odd questions that we might be asked to field, you know, it seems like a combination of the two.
Yep.
And it's not, it doesn't sound like a big impact currently to government service, right? It's not identifying people in town.
All I can represent is, the, the growth of the funeral industry has, has grown substantially over the last 10 years. Whereas, somebody goes out and hangs up the shingle, and leaves for somebody to complain, and I have to shut them down, we end up at the same place, the Board of Appeals. So this is a way where we can establish parameters, size of the lot, numbers of dogs, so people know going in, and we have better control. It's the same reason we have signed bylaws, set back requirements for houses, it's just another thing. But without it, we don't have that control. That gentleman over there says perfectly. Without it, it's... There wasn't a need for this 10 years ago.
Currently, it's allowed in commercially zoned areas and not allowed...
Well, it's not allowed.
Not allowed at all?
No.
So, then my next question is, why are we proposing that it be allowed across the different...
Well, I think essentially, I said, you know, I said, residential districts, maybe not downtown. And Zach, who, who's had a whole lot of conversation over this while I wasn't present, you know, I think rightly decided, said, "Well, we oughta, we oughta make it a minimum-sized lot, three acres." There are a ton of three-acre lots in the whole town, let alone there are none downtown. So, it eliminates that right away. A lot of the industrial districts don't have three-acre lots. So the idea of the three-acre lot was, ideally, when the Board of Appeals looked at it, the guy could propose putting his enclosure over here, and it would keep it away from the residential districts as much as possible. You know, the ideal place for this kinda thing is buried out in the back of the Pratt Park near some other place. And, you know, because, you know, it, you know, it does make noise, we're trying to make controls to avoid that, but what's...
Okay. Let's, if we can, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Do we have the ability to put in here set-back requirements?
We could.
That vary from...
We could.
Because, I mean, I, example, I'm on three acres, and I, my driveway is 10 feet from my neighbors, so having three acres isn't any good if it's right in the front. But, yeah, you gotta be careful going down too far down that road, because that's what the whole idea of the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals will put conditions on it. If you came with a proposal that put yours right on the edge of your driveway, the Board of Appeals wouldn't buy it. They'd say, "Put it over here in the back of the woods where nobody lives." That, that's what the whole idea of the special permit is. You know, this gets you in the door, and if you wanna put it over here on your three acres, and it's gonna inconvenience neighbors, but you have the ability to put it over here on the other part of the three acres where it won't inconvenience anybody, that's where they're gonna tell you to put it. You still hold the upper hand. No matter how you look at it, the Board still holds the upper hand as to whether they get it and where they put it.
Okay. Let's, let's move on to animal shelters. I think one of the reasons that we're talking about this at this point is, I think Bay Path is, which is on Rafferty Road, is looking for a new home, or might be forced to look for a new home in the reasonable future. And so that's kinda, I think, what is going on with that. John, do you wanna introduce this one?
Yeah, this one, yeah, Bay Path, actually, maybe I'd like to have the Bay Path people introduce you, 'cause that's how, because I, basically, I probably should've had, I had, is that all right with you?
Go, go ahead.
Would you like to introduce, because I probably should've had Mike do it the first time on this one, because if the proponents here...
Sure.
Susan Ossec, resident of Hockington Baker Lane, and also the president of the Bay Path Humane Society. Bay Path has been in town now since the late 70s. We've been on leased land that we get from Everstore, and we're at the point now where we need to make a decision on how to grow. In order to do that, we need to determine, excuse me, if we could stay in town, or whether or not we need to look someplace else. And obviously, the inability today to identify land that's zoned in town is a real limitation for us. And so that's why we wanted to see whether or not it would be possible to have land zoned in town to give us some options. How many people, are there too many people familiar with Bay Path, either because you may have adopted a cat or a dog from us, or because, you know, perhaps you had family members involved and shared with us? If not, I'm happy to give a little bit more history about the location.
I think we're all set for the history today. I note that almost the same type of conditions are from one to the other.
And that was, that was the benefit of, of doing the two of them at the same time. The other, the other main aspect of Bay Path is that, and actually, if you'd like to talk for a second, is that they, they are our dog pound. And for the town to build its own dog pound right now, I, that would never get through town meeting. We just spent a lot of money last year, tomorrow, I think we're signing off a... But we'd be obligated to if we didn't have one. Right. And so that was one of the other...
Doggy daycare, Illinois is going.
Yeah. But anyway, you're talking to your kids, so...
Okay. So, as far as the kenneling goes for the town, we used to, years ago, we kennelled with Bay Path. The state came up with new regs, said we had to get, little quick history, we had to get three bids, so we ended up leaving Bay Path because it was a cheaper option to go somewhere else. Well, by the time it became, down the road many years, the cheap auction wasn't there anymore. We were paying outside to board our dogs for a year, somewhere in the vicinity of about 10 grand.
Ooh.
Okay? So Liz came back as manager at Bay Path, and was willing to take Hockington back. And right now, we are looking somewhere in the vicinity of...
Oh, anyone?
For what we're paying for rent?
$3,000.
$3,000. So there's a big savings right there to us right at this point. If we had to go and build our own kennel, because right now, there is nowhere else for us to go. I've done a little research, there is nowhere for us to go. With all the new state regs, we have to bring anything we build up to state specs, which means air conditioning, heating, staffing, you know, the whole nine yards. We're looking at huge money. Right now, I'm a one-man operation. I get paid 20 hours a week. I can't staff a kennel. You know, to be there to take care of them, they're already on the premises. So you're probably looking to build the facility for the town, probably 100,000 dollars minimum to build us a, a facility. So, to keep them in town is a big bonus for the town, as far as I'm concerned. That way, there we keep rolling along with the animal control, kinda the way it is, not having to go to, you know, more, plus they're willing to help us, they back me up when I go away, numerous things.
Public comments, questions? Go ahead.
I mean, the same concern, and now we're talking two of them, and this would be overnight, and I'm just wondering if it could be zoned in a commercial place? I mean, I understand the need, but if it could be zoned in a commercial place, I mean, the residents of downtown aren't really...
Well, that, it wouldn't end up in a downtown.
If I, if I may answer that through the, through the Chair. The, the way we wrote this was so that one of the, one or more of the town parcels might be available, 'cause what, they can't afford to buy any, enough land to build this. And so what we were looking at, at, is maybe, maybe something out of Food Street, maybe something at Pratt, maybe something, one of the other parcels that we own, so give them enough land, or lease them enough land. And that's sorta how we wrote it, to try and be more, that, so this would not be in any neighborhood of, anybody's neighborhood or anything like that. So that's how we, we're trying to do some kind of a partnership, is the way, is the way that I was looking at it, and I believe the rest of the, the committee.
Okay. Mike?
They, I, I'm not sure it was called Bay Path back then, but my father...
How can you mean society?
Built the building. I didn't know it was just back in the 70s. I'm not, I guess I'm old.
Well, the first one was 19, first one was 1984.
That's what, that's what it was. But, but anyway, what everybody's gonna realize, and hopefully Town Meeting realizes, this is kind of a, a public-private partnership kinda thing, where, you know, true, the town could go out and do this on their own, and I believe the town is required to provide a kennel. And so we'd have to go out and, and build it, and fund it, and staff it, and do all that stuff, where we have these people where, if the town could find a parcel for them, and say, "Look, we'll lease this to you for so much a year, and the deal is, you'll take care of our dogs up to so many," kinda like what they do now. They're great at it. And the upside is, we get to see them walking them around. And the, it, it's just a good thing for the town. To do it the other way is really expensive for the town. And, and the whole idea, as, as you pointed out, was, if we could find a town parcel that was, was big like Pratt, or, or like where the new schools go, that we could get in.
Paul, 7 Midland Drive. Also, a similar note to the first one, I know you're gonna work on the wording later, but point number two, all animals to be kept indoors at night, should just specify the hours, what night is.
That's a good idea.
to go in and those who have cars, what's the current square footage? Because I've counted 10 to 12 cars on a Saturday sometimes.
Of the, the parking itself?
No, of the, because it's...
Oh, that's not 1700 square feet.
It's not 1700 square feet. Our parking situation is very limited, so that in any kind of future facility, we need to allocate a lot more parking. Part of the situation is because of the construction that's going on further up on Rafferty Road, so people can't park anymore on the street the way we could, let's say, a year ago. And so that's why you're seeing a lot of congestion when you, when you go into the shelter itself, but we know that with any kind of future facility, we really need to have a minimum number of parking spaces.
Okay, because this is three per thousand, which sounds light in comparison. You know, you'd only require five spots if it was 1700, and that's light.
A future facility, we need to have much more than that. We're looking at something closer to 7,500 square feet for a shelter of our size that adopts out 1,000 plus animals a year. What we've got today is not, as someone attested to, it was built in the 80s, it's been a great building for us, but it's not, it frankly doesn't, doesn't reflect, because it was designed at the old animal shelter today.
So, where is the parking requirement in here?
Number two.
Number two.
Number two.
Oh, no. Okay. I'm in the wrong. Never mind, I've got my dogs. Okay. Okay, we'll kind of sort through that. Elaine, you got an action item to...
Barry Rosenblut, Tim Bryer. On this, on the parking, the three spaces of 1,000 square feet across the floor area, is that of the constructed building or the kennel included?
We're going to have Elaine research that to make sure that we get enough parking requirement.
Zach talked about that quite a bit.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yep.
The chair, Zach. Doesn't necessarily affect current animal shelters, it affects where new ones could go.
No, actually, if, if you, look at the way we wrote it, it, this is, it's set up as more of a public-private entity. It's, there are so many hoops that somebody has to drive through that really only Bay Path can do this one. This is not for multiple overnight...
It's a not-for-profit.
This is not, it's a not-for-profit. It's working with the town. It's, there are so many, we really made this pretty specific. This is not to encourage another one coming in.
Well, it's what, Mr. Chairman, it's what it says. It's only by the town or charitable or nonprofit, so it's not for a...
But by the same definition we had earlier about West Doggy Daycare, if there's no bylaw, so if someone has boarding horses or any other sort of dog walking enterprise or anything like that, if they have animals overnight, this is just one specific thing, but by definition, does not affect other things.
Does this, does this, is this, does this apply to horses?
No.
No. It's dog. It's in the animal shelter.
Plus, it's animals, it doesn't necessarily say it's dogs, so that's...
Animals, cats, dogs, so I think, you know, you could change...
Maybe we need to...
Cats and dogs, but that's basically what it is.
Because it's not many stray horses.
We get a few.
It's not going to be operated by the town or...
We had to spread...
Can't capture those damn stray horses.
Okay. I think, I think we're ready to move on to the next one.
Okay.
Next one is the hotel, hotel overlay district modifications.
Yeah, and this one, at the public forum, Elaine wrote, the suggestion was made to eliminate, modify certain requirements for a hotel in the hotel overlay district. It was adopted in 2009, and two places in Hockton were allowed to have hotels. And, and what happened was the, only two hotels were allowed, one on each side of 495, and the hotel had to include an 8,000 square foot function of meeting room space, a full-service restaurant, health club facilities, either the same building or the same lot. And, and the town was, we also put in there, there were for a high, high-end hotel, for function space for Hockton events. And, and with the, and this, everybody had good intentions. Everybody put in exactly what they thought would be a great hotel. However, the high-end hotels aren't building what we were asking for. An 8,000 square foot function area holds seats over 600 people. I don't know too many people that throw the 600 person weddings anymore. My bat mitzvahs for my kids aren't that big.
What's the problem?
Yeah, so, so what we do, so we...
Step out.
So, you know, and so, so there was, we were wondering if there was another reason why a high-end hotel wasn't looking at Hockton? Well, we put a few of them here. So we did some research, there were a couple of members of Zach that are here now, we actually did some, did a lot of research, and came up with that, that most of the hotels have 1,500 square, 1,200 to 1,500 square foot meeting rooms. And, you know, multiple ones can be put together if people, if the people wanted more, but to ask for 8,000 square feet. And the other ones we were looking at were the, the full-service restaurant. You know, so, you know, and then to get in specifics of, of how and where the restaurant should be, and what was somebody, what was the...
Oh, and the health club.
And the health club, yeah, that, and I believe at some point, people wanted that outside, not just guests, but join. And, and hotels really don't have that. They have, they have healthcare, they have health facilities, you know, and that kind of thing for, for the guests. But again, I think we were trying to design a hotel for, and...
Okay. Let's open it up to public comments. On the seat, oh, Mike?
I just want to really endorse what John was saying, and how much effort went into the analysis for this. There was a lot of real research of analyzing what type of places are being built, and what type of facilities. And then obviously, a lot of us, if we're lucky enough to marry, they go to a hotel, you know, recognize that even, you know, Hiltons and Marriotts and all that, they don't have health clubs, they have, you know, three or four Nordic tracks, and, you know, a couple of things like that. They have, yes, some, the really high-end have full-service restaurants, but they just, you know, and there's no more, you know, gigantic spaces, there's convention spaces and all that. And, you know, given, given what we're facing, and we all read the papers, and we all understand the situation, we know what's going on in town, for the tremendous impact that we're seeing on the schools with the, take out the adjective, legacy farm, and, and the impending, essentially almost certain loss to substantial value that we would, are going to lose with EMC. The idea of trying to make some of the commercial development in the city more attractive in the town, considering, you know, the quality of the town and, and the type of, of entities that would like to come here, you know, something that, that would give these types of organizations a little bit more incentive, and tailor the bylaw more towards the type of place that people would want to build. I mean, it just seemed to make complete sense to, to, you know, drop it down a bit. Obviously, we've here from 209 to 215, 2016, and nobody's come. So, you know, part of zoning is to avoid problems, and part of it is to encourage positives. And this one hasn't, it may have avoided problems, but it certainly hasn't encouraged any positives.
Okay.
As we're here, many, almost a decade later.
Gateball, Seven Meadowland Drive. The zoning looks fine where it's written, just a question about the, most concerned about the height of a hotel building, would that be covered in another bylaw, or?
It is. Go ahead, Elaine.
Whatever, whatever the zoning district that it's in, the height limit, it's already there.
Okay, this mentions hotel overlay district, is that a specific area of town?
Yeah, it's...
You have the highway?
Yeah. It's parallel to the, to the highway, covers, covers part of Elmwood Park, covers part of South Street, covers part of Lumber Street.
So like, what would be the height?
The industrial...
How many floors could it be in that area? Do you know?
I think, well, the height limit in the industrial B district is 45 feet.
So like, four and a half stories?
And then on South Street, it's 60 feet.
Okay.
Unless it's within a certain distance of Haywood Street.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Does that need to be mentioned in this at all, or is it just covered in another bylaw?
The same.
It's the same as it already is.
I'm just wondering, Clifford Kistner, 86, West Main Street, Hockington. I'm wondering if, is the language also associated to the changes that are, are being proposed for residential use as well? Is that's what, what I'm reading in here now is, is that the changes that you're making towards, towards that, from the Zone B to the EPBD?
That's the next...
We're not there, we're not there, yes.
That's not this side.
You're getting there, sir.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is...
Name an address, please.
I'm sorry, Bublin or 56 Elm Street. How did this focus on the hotel? I mean, are we like going out and trying to find a hotel, or a company that wants to build a hotel in the area? And if so, I don't really see the sense to it, frankly, because you've got a bunch of hotels in Milford and Westboro, and you've got, I mean, I would imagine EMC would be the biggest draw for a hotel in the area, people coming through. We don't know what's going to happen with that. I mean, that could just be transferred to someplace else at any time after that sale goes through. So it just seems like it's a bunch of work, but not a really good draw. I mean, if nothing's been done for like two or three years, and you're going through all these, all these things to try to get a hotel in there, and nothing's...
Mike, do you want to try and answer to that one?
Sure. Yeah. What it is, is you're taking a set of controls that were designed seven years ago, and you're loosening them up to see if it would enable a hotelier to locate something that I think most people would perceive as a really valuable thing for the town. There would be hotel motel tax, there would be restaurant taxes, there'd be sales taxes and things that could cause people to come and spend their money here. People might stay at a hotel and go to downtown and all. So it isn't creating new places to have hotels, it's just making it more possible that an entity would, would find the ability to fit within these dimensional controls and build a hotel. So all it is, is taking existing dimensional controls and modifying them. It's not doing anything other than, that, that framework is already here. And so it's just, if, but somebody who's Hilton or this or that, they're going to say, well, we're never going to build a hotel with 8,000 square feet of, of function rooms, so we'll just never come to Hockton. Most people, I think, would perceive that a quality hotel out by 495, with those extra taxes and, and people coming in to maybe spend money, would be a really good thing for the town to have. The district's already there, it's just that the dimensional controls make it an incredible disincentive for them to spend hundreds of thousands or plus dollars to come here. So this just makes it more possible, they might choose here instead of Westboro or Milford or somewhere, and have them get those massive tax benefits and the hotel motel tax that you get, and the other benefits for the town.
Okay, I'd flip your argument on the EMC around the other way. Maybe if there was a hotel around, maybe that would encourage EMC, or if there's a successor into continuing to occupy those spaces.
Or new people coming to take those empty spaces.
Well, and this Perkin element.
Okay. Anyone else, let's move on, because we've got a couple other goodies coming up here. Elmwood Park Business District.
Is that where this place, they're giving my last?
That might have been your last question there. So why don't you ask it again in the...
Do we want to have it introduced?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yes.
Jeez, talk about skipping right ahead. Boy, moving it along. Really moving it along. Okay, let's go right to the question answers. Okay. Yeah, so, so we decided to take a look at this. Last year, when it, when it came before Zach and the planning board, there were a lot more questions than answers, it seems, about the way that this was written. We had ways that there were an industrial, an industrial area that we're going to do an overlay on it, and if it went through a, a master plan process, you're allowed to do this, if it didn't have a master plan, you're allowed to do that, and the, and the paper, they, just the paper itself was very thick. It looked like something that may have come out of joint media congress.
So nothing comes out of that.
Yeah, we'll pass it and see what, see what's about. Yeah, and, and so what we wanted to do was to, yeah, and, and really it came down to one of the last meetings, we decided to scrap everything and start over again, and, and just put, who do we want to create? And what don't we want there, let's not put it there? And what, and what are we trying to, what are we trying to encourage? You know, and some of the things that we were looking to try and do is, is to, you know, this is a redevelopment. This is not like taking Lumber Street, where they tore down a bunch of trees. It's not like Legacy Area, where they, where they, Western Nurseries, where they tore down trees to put up this. This, this is, you know, dozens of acres of parking lot that, that, from, if you look at the Google Maps and satellite view, you can see the cracks in the parking lot that it's been there so long, that, that people haven't parked there or anything. And so this is a redevelopment that we wanted to try and encourage something, you know, and, you know, a, a university, a campus, or, or some other entity of that effect, that maybe a hotel would want to go there next to it, maybe some shops. So we decided to, to look at it a little bit, a little bit outside the box, so to speak. And so what we came up with was a Elmwood Park Business District, and, you know, and have it a mixed use. I'm not going to get into reading all of these. This is, this is, this is long. If, through the chair, I'd like to yield a, yield a minute to, to Mr. Purse, because this is, this is one that he'd like to talk about, I believe.
Yeah, thanks. I think that one of the most critical plans was almost a, Dawn came to Marblehead thing. If, if we all remember, this is the area, if I'm not wrong, Elaine, with the cross-point development and all that, was, and one of the critical elements of that that actually hamstrung us for quite a long time, was the concept of a, of a master's, you know, master's plan special permit type of a thing. And what our discussion recognized is that's fine if there's basically one owner, but when you have an area that you want to incentivize to, and, and as, as John pointed out, this is already developed land, you know, if this was in a riverfront, it'd be called degraded, you know, it's, 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 it's something that's semi-moribund, it's environmentally tremendously unfriendly, it's, it's paved, it's, it creates drainage issues, it creates heat issues and, and vacancy issues and all the rest. And so, but it's multiple parcels with multiple owners. And, and I think that one of the reasons that a lot of people had trouble with Finn and the other developers' possession is, how are you going to get everybody to sign into one gigantic master plan special permit? And so one of the much smarter people on the zoning committee than I, said, well, why don't we just get rid of that, and then let's see how we could address it, almost just like a, just a rezoning, that would affect just like any area of the town that has a lot of people that own different pieces of land, but that it, that it meets a uniformity concept, that, that it's similarly situated land that makes sense to have it all fit together. And once, once we took that out of it, it really opened up a whole new way of looking at that property. And so as Elaine's summary points out, you know, a lot of the uses stay the same, a bunch of sort of lower grade uses get eliminated, like manufacturing and warehousing and distribution. So in other words, it's to discourage, you know, the more industrial style of uses, which in turn causes people, if they were going to develop here, to, to do upgraded development, which would mean there would be people that could have more environmentally sensitive developments, better designed parking facilities, more lead type stuff, you can't do that in a warehouse, but you can do it in a quality office building or things like that, or some of the other recreational facilities that, that we talked about. So it seemed to be a way to, to make this area more attractive, and people could still develop the lots individually, or somebody could maybe attempt to assemble, but wouldn't need the ability to put the entire thing under, under a massive master site plan. And again, I think that the really critical element was that it's already heavily impacted property. So it would be a way... Um, so it would be a way of encouraging, and again, remember, all this is through, you know, site plan approval and, and all the rest of that, so that, that the planning board would look at all the redevelopments for how the traffic would flow, how they, how the parking lots would be designed, how the open space would be upgraded, and all the rest of that. And again, it, it's, the, the idea is to encourage people to come and invest very substantial dollars in a use pattern that has very limited impact, frankly, on schools, uh, and as a result, um, you know, allows for money and tax base to come into the town, uh, but has significant limitations on the impact for the services.
Cliff? Cliff, just near eighty-six West Main Street. Um, it's a three-part that I'll, I'll, I'll put out, and then maybe you can address them as, as I, as I go. First of all, um, we're talking about several different owners of, of that property as it stands, and who says that those are other butters to the property that is, I think, what we're focusing on was Finn Perry's property? Why is there, is there correspondence between those residents of, or owners of that property and Finn Perry, first of all? Secondly, is, are they all in the same mindset that their property, they want to redevelop their property, which they already own? So, so we're talking about a one set piece of property that is gonna benefit one owner of that piece of land, but the adjacent people that are associated to it, they own their land, and maybe they don't want to be part of this overlay?
Hey, that's, that's the first question.
I mean.
First question is, is very similar to the one I had. Do the current landowners support this proposal?
Well, but here's something, before you get to that, Ken.
Yeah.
I, I, unless I missed something in the meetings that we attended, I don't think that any of what we did, and I wanna be corrected by Elaine or John or anybody, was designed to benefit or, or somehow cater to a particular owner. That was the whole idea. It was designed to, to try to deal with the whole area in a manner that would encourage an, an upzoning, uh, and, uh, you know, a, a, a more beneficial and valuable, uh, use of the property going forward. There's nothing here, there's no particular person that owns a piece that, that encouraged this to occur.
And that poses the question, and that poses the question to me, that, that who is, who's bringing this forth and for what purpose? I don't, I don't.
I see, the, the town committee is bringing it for.
Right, right.
Which, which is what we do on a lot of zonings.
Absolutely, and I understand that. But the initial, there, there has to be an initial, um, status of somebody that wants to make this, this.
Not necessarily, that's for sure.
Yes, yes.
No, we need to get together as a committee.
Not sure at all.
No.
I mean, we make all sorts of changes of, of stuff, just hoping we're gonna get something there.
Okay.
We're not successful. Uh, for example, the hotel. We, we put that in a few years ago, nobody was really pushing for it, but we thought a hotel was a good idea in town meeting, but, okay, second question.
Second question.
I just wanna say, Cliff?
Yes.
One of the, one of the things that came up was, we took, we looked at an aerial shot of the, of the area, of the land, and saw how degraded the parking lot is, and how bad of a situation that whole area is, and said, we need to do something better than this.
But did you mention that to the owner of that property?
Can I just add, the owner, the owners were notified of the public hearing this evening.
Yep.
Okay, but, but, and, and still, they have, they have the final say of what they do to their property, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so, so that being.
Whether they keep it or sell it or whatever.
Or whatever, you know, like, like, maybe they, maybe they wanna keep it that way, maybe they don't wanna keep it that way, but wouldn't that behoove us to find out what the majority of, of, of consensus is for the landowners themselves at present?
If I were here, right now, that's one of the reasons we're here.
That's a public meeting.
That's right. If they had a concern, they would come here and say, I don't want my land rezoned that way, I'd like it to be a broken down parking lot that's essentially vacant.
Can I ask you, who you represent at, at the board right, being here at the board right now?
He's on zoning advisory.
I'm on the zoning advisory committee.
I, I know.
Okay, I, I don't wanna go that way with this, I mean.
I'd like them to just know how this, this came about to this, to this level.
He, he's a member of, of those, he's a member of the zoning advisory committee, and he's on that committee as a representative of the Board of Appeals.
Ten, twelve, fourteen people.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, on Zach.
I don't need, I don't know a single person that owns a piece of this property here, and couldn't care less either way. I mean, it makes it sound like you have an agenda, that you are working for some of the people there, and if they had a problem, then why wouldn't they be here and say, I don't know.
I'm gonna butter, and the accessible point to that, to that, what you're making changes to. And, and I have a, a person sitting right next to me that is the other side of that entrance to that, to that venue. And so that brings me into the, to the mix just as much as it does anybody else. And that's where I question the fact that who is, who is the, behind the, the position of making these zoning changes, and for, for what cause?
To upgrade the area and bring more value investment to the town.
Then if that is the case, then if that, the picture doesn't help me, it doesn't matter what the picture looks like, I'm, I'm talking about the owners of the property and what, are they ready to sell their property to make, to make these changes, or?
They don't have to sell their property, they could just, they could just redevelop their property consistent with these changes.
Okay, and what if they didn't want them?
They don't.
They don't.
So, so what I'm.
It's not eminent domain.
The problem that I see now is that it boils it down to one thing, is that there's, there, there has to be someone behind something that to make this, um, come into play besides us as a, as a, as Zach, as the planning board.
Okay, let me, let me, let me try to answer and.
Wait, wait, just.
Time out, time out. John?
Okay, sorry.
At the end of the day, the planning board in town meeting can zone whatever we wanna zone, and it's a wish list. Boy, we'd like to zone so we have a beautiful restaurant downtown that, that serves gourmet meals for four bucks. And, you know, but it isn't us, at the end of the day, that can accomplish it, it's whoever wants to open a restaurant, and, you know, quite frankly, if they have gourmet meals at four bucks, I'll probably eat there once a week, but.
Or if they select, let them serve liquor.
Oh, anyway, uh, anyway, so, let's, uh, let's go on to other questions now.
Just wanna, I make a comment. Um, we're pretty much all on the same side. Um, we're either elected or appointed, but we're all volunteers. Um, and, uh, sometimes, and you guys are butters, I mean, you guys are there, I appreciate your comments, Neil and Chris. Uh, sometimes we know things, or, I mean, I don't know that gentleman there, I think I seen him on TV, I've never met him in person before, but yeah, who are, who are we? And we have name tags, but the, Zach, it's all online. But we're all trying to do our best to make planning for that area better from the problems we had last year. Uh, you had issues with developer, you had questions, and things didn't happen.
Right.
So now they're taking a fresh look at it and saying, well, if there are gonna be changes, here's what we'd like to see, and these are things that we would like to see happen, will make this possible, uh, going forward. The, the current owners don't have to do anything, don't have to make any changes, but they may often say, well, we'll, you know, we'll sell to a developer who might.
All right, all right. So rebuttal of that would be this, this for me, is that we, we have, both of us, um, and I speak for myself without Tom, but, um, the, we, in the last presentation, we were inflicted with an imposition of eminent domain taking of our property. And, and that was a very, um, big slap in the face, not by, no, wait a minute, I'm not saying by the board or by Zach, by, by the developer himself, Finn Perry.
Only, only, it can only happen by, by, by a, a, a town.
I understand that, but, but.
So, so, so that makes no sense.
Well, well, then why was it brought to my attention in my home that that, that would be the case?
Yeah, okay, I, I, it's not germane to what we're talking about tonight with this. Uh, let me, let me open it up for the board members now to, to get some comments. I had three. One is, with this taking it out of the hotel district and makes hotels by right, that would then potentially increase the number of hotels. We, right now, we're, we were at two, and this would allow additional hotels beyond the district, which has got two.
That's right. If, if it turned out that somebody thought that as this developed, that in the future there may be a value because of how, let's say, the area grew, that they may think that there would be a value to put a hotel there, then that's something.
You could put a hotel, or two, or maybe three, or whatever.
In order to streamline it, when we were trying to streamline it.
Yep.
We decided, you know, when we, when we were talking about the, you know, as I said before, if it's, if there's a master plan or no master plan, an industrial, we just try to make it straightforward, yeah, you can have a hotel here too.
Okay. Or hotels.
Yeah.
Whatever will fit.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the second is, I'm a little concerned when you take away some of the uses. Now, some of the uses you took away, I admit, I don't really like them per se.
Some of the uses we recommended to take away.
Yes, that's true.
We know we don't have the final word. All in one, I'm a misunderstanding, we didn't take anything away, we just.
Well, I mean, we're trying to streamline it to make it a business park.
Well, my action item for Elaine is, are any of those uses that we're taking away currently being occupied? I don't wanna make somebody nonconforming at town meeting, quite frankly.
Give us a few examples?
Oh, like, um.
Light manufacturing?
How about the automobile and truck repair, which, don't they repair tanks in one of the buildings, or didn't, you know, the, the tank guy is over there?
Yeah.
I mean, not, not that that's what we, what we like, you know, but I mean, I just, I just.
Ken, I think that's fascinating, I mean, where, where were you, or where was the town when it did massive rezonings to take lots that were five and six and seven thousand square feet around the lakes and things, and suddenly say, it would be a good idea to have them be twenty, thirty, forty thousand, which rented every single one of those properties legally nonconforming?
I know, before my time in.
Well, I mean, so, that made no sense. So, sometimes when you upgrade, and there are really very solid protections for people that become nonconforming.
Yep.
And they can continue using it, and they can change to a degree, they can upgrade their facilities, they can upgrade the quality of things, as long as they don't, you know, breach the certain tests.
Yep. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that that, that is a, a point of discussion. I'm not so saying that, quite frankly, I would like your district better than, than.
When we're looking at, at, at the revenue, we, you know, you know, the garage, you know, the garage shop businesses versus putting up a hotel or.
And I wanna make sure that, that everyone thinks that PerkinElmer and all their new facilities fits into the new, new thing, the, the one with the manufacturing. I, I see how you kinda written it, but I, I want somebody to make sure that, at least PerkinElmer, I mean, that, I, I, I view them as a very positive guise that we really, you know, if, if it all looked like PerkinElmer, we'd be really happy, probably.
Right.
So, uh, anyway, those are my comments. Other questions from the members of board, Claire?
I, I will just echo Ken's concern, some of these things that are restricted, I, I certainly don't wanna see big, heavy, dirty, ugly, noisy, smelly operations, but, you know, we, I think part of our objective here is to find ways to bring businesses into town if they are a good fit for the neighborhood, and, um, you know, there are certainly types of maybe what would be called light manufacturing that are contained, that aren't noisy. Um, I, I, I hate to limit the use in some areas, but I, I wanted, so that is a concern, some of these that are, that are limiting, that we might not want to, want to limit. What was the thinking behind having a building cover a hundred percent of the lot area? And it also says that there's gonna be a minimum pervious area requirement, pervious is the opposite of impervious, which means you gotta have something that's drainable, so wouldn't that be, wouldn't those be contradictory if you had a hundred percent lot area covered, couldn't have any pervious area?
Where are you fighting in a hundred percent?
Uh, well, on our cheat sheet over on page five, Elaine explains industrial district, and it says, the amount of building space that could be on a lot will change from fifty percent of a lot area to a hundred percent of the lot area.
So this, you're calculating floor area, not the coverage.
It's not lot coverage, it's.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's how you calculate the floor area?
It's actually the coverage of more green space.
Yeah, we're trying to cover more green space, the actual lot coverage is maximum of sixty percent.
Oh, all right, all right, I thought it was gonna have a hundred percent.
And we're trying to encourage, and see, we don't want those giant parking lots, and I was just showing the pictures of it.
Okay.
We're trying to green it up as much as possible, and that, and that was our.
I was reading that.
And for the light manufacturing is, you know, we've been, we've been industrial, that place has been industrial its entire life, and no new industrial have come.
Well, Hawken, Hawkenton has always been a small town.
Cliff, Cliff, we're just finished, we just finished with that. And so we were trying to see if, if we modified it to some extent that if somebody else might try and come, 'cause there are buildings they could, they could still move into if they wanted to.
Okay. Other board members?
I don't wanna repeat the same question, but, um, I guess I'm not clear on the rationale for limiting specifically or excluding distribution and manufacturing, other than it's, it's not happening, but, but why exclude it?
Hotels aren't happening either.
Well, they are up and down four ninety-five, it's not Hawken.
We know why.
They're a hundred percent full in, in, sorry, through the chair, they're a hundred percent full in Milford and, and, and in Westboro.
Anyway, uh, you know, I mean, I don't, you know, to Frank's point about distribution, I mean, when you're at the crossroads, this might be something, but do we really want, you know, does distribution really work on that particular site from a traffic in and out?
I'm, I'm not trying to judge business by business, industry by industry.
Gotcha.
I'm just saying, something was permitted, now we're saying it's not permitted, and, and I'm not clear on why that's true.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm having that hard time.
Well, I mean, just a last thing before I go. I mean, I, I guess, we talked about this at, at the committee. I mean, as I said, and it sounds overly simplistic, but, you know, zoning is used generically for two purposes. It's to ensure that noxious things don't happen next to things that people don't think noxious. So you have residential zones, and they exclude commercial uses and, and things like that, and you allow some quasi-commercial by special permit, let's say, for home offices and things like that. And then another whole element of zoning that Elaine would understand better than I even is, 'cause she's a planner, is that you try to look at a distribution of uses as a way of incenting certain things to happen, and if you consider that the development of a municipality is an evolutionary thing, which unfortunately, this is my own personal perception, is not adopted all so much in a lot of places, but if you do look at it that way, and you evaluate how land use patterns change, and needs of residents change, and economic needs for the municipality to continue to function change, then, then you take a big picture view in that you sometimes make modifications to encourage things to occur, and as a result, sometimes you discourage other things to occur. And yes, is it a group of choices? Of course it is. But the alternative obviously could be, well, you leave everything the way it's always been, and you just let everybody do whatever they want, uh, but that may not produce the best mix for the community, it may not produce the best tax base, it may create drains on services that can't be met. And so part of planning and rezoning is to make conscious choices that a certain use of mixes is perceived as more valuable, because things don't stay the way they were in the thirties or the fifties or the nineties, and, and sometimes you even try to plan for what is it gonna be like in ten or twenty years. So I think that's a big change.
Part of it, for this district was trying to create a package of uses that offered some amenities and some reason to be there, so that, for instance, a high-end hotel wouldn't necessarily wanna go next to a manufacturing facility or a warehouse, it would want to go with some R and D, uh, some office, uh, some educational uses, those kinds of things. So trying to craft kind of something that all worked together as a package.
Yeah, well, I, I see the hotel and the expanded retail uses is probably highest on the list of.
No, actually, we're look, trying, we were actually, um, there was a lot of talk about, as I said before, about trying to get a, a university to put a satellite campus, something, so granted, they don't pay, they don't pay taxes yet, um, everybody, they, they bring people.
And they bring hotels online, restaurants.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, first one concern about the genetic, biological, and chemical research centers, level one, are you looking for, that's, wouldn't have some concern about safety.
They're already there, they're totally allowed, it's a standard.
That's not a chance.
And, and if you look at level three, it's, I think level two is your high school lab.
Yeah.
Level three might be Milford Hospital. I mean, it's, I, you, yes, okay. I mean, it's.
Can I just make one addition? And I kinda goes along with the eliminating a bunch of stuff. Um, you know, there's a whole block of business buildings down there that, you know, that incorporate the metal mirrors guy, and the snowplow guy, and the tire guy, all those little nickel dime operations, they're. All those little nickel dime operations. They're very local people. Now, if, if we, if we do this, they can still operate. I understand. There'll be pre-existing nonconformity. They can still operate. But what'll happen is the property will become more valuable. It'll become what we want, a more, more gentrified use, right? Where are these guys going to go?
Yep. I, I, I think maybe Elaine, we got to reach out to the property owners and make sure that, I, I don't want to, I don't want to stand up at town meeting and have five of them all come up right after another and, and it'll kill it. But, but then again, maybe they're on, on support of it. I don't know. I just don't know.
Can I just make one comment?
Yep.
It's something that hasn't been addressed yet.
Sure, go ahead.
And that is with, um, with all the designs here for development and everything, there's, nothing's been talked about transportation in and out of here. I mean, there's like a two lane, there's Lumber Street extension and Elm Street, that one portioned by Elmer Perkins, they put back behind the gas station and that's it. And if you start doing all this development here, it's just, I mean, you've already got enough development across the street that it's going to downgrade that intersection to a fair intersection as opposed to a good intersection. And then you do all this and it's just going to jam everything up. And there's no, there's no allowance here for an outlet. And I'm just wondering if that can be put into consideration somewhere. Preferably a connection with Wood Street.
I concur with him as well.
Well, one of, one of the, you know, zoning doesn't, site plan review would require that anything going in there doesn't break the bank as far as being able to get in and out. I mean, that's, that's the, the part. I don't think it's, number one, I, having walked to Wood Street, I honestly don't think conservation commission will ever approve getting through there. I mean.
Something has to be done though.
It's just too wet.
If you develop that area, it's just going to, it's just going to increase the pressure automatically.
And I understand.
And with forward thinking and looking, that's where we come in as, as the butters. That's what I'm concerned about.
Joe?
I just have a question. What's the difference between a hotel room with a hotel with meeting rooms and a conference center with hotel rooms, with sleeping rooms? Cause it's, conference centers would add a dormitory component, which would be hotel-like rooms, but in the, between H and I. But in H, you can have a hotel with meeting rooms and it's the same size.
I remember talking about it. I forget what the answer was.
And if, if it's a dormitory room, I mean, they're just, any conference center I can think of in the area is basically just more conference space, which seems to be allowed by H, but wouldn't be allowed by I.
Were we trying to distinguish between like a, a university conference center and a?
Yes. There were some who were concerned about the traffic impact of people staying at a conference center. But to your point, what's the difference between that and a hotel?
Well, it'd be, well, then they would have.
Hotel was a small size.
Yeah, then they would have to have the, the restaurant, the.
Which it would. But typically a conference center would actually have less traffic because people are going to stay there overnight and stay in the facility versus staying in the hotel, driving someplace else and coming back. So from the traffic impact, if you look at like the Babson Conference Center, which is in a quasi-residential area, it's much less traffic impact than if it was a hotel. I just don't want.
No, that's right. This is why we continue to vet it, you know?
Sure. Uh, I just, I didn't hear anything about my question and I'm just, um, wondering if that could be considered by some ideas tossed about.
I mean, connecting off to.
Oh, well, as far as like outlets, yeah. I mean, it's a major, it's a major concern.
Especially if the university or something goes in there, like you're imposing.
It's, 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 that's a, a site plan review. Does it work or not? I mean, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I mean, you know.
And then, and then you also have to consider, I'm going to do the chair, you have to also consider that if somebody's going to invest.
But shouldn't that be considered?
Cliff, you can let me finish talking. If, if, if somebody's going to invest a, a couple hundred million dollars to build a hotel, I'm sure they're going to make sure that people can get in and out or that, that somebody's going to lose a lot of money.
I just think that's something that should be.
You mean, you, you mean like, you mean, you mean like Starbucks?
Okay.
I can make a comment. Um, my views are similar to Ken's, but a little bit different in a couple of aspects. Having been on a conservation commission, um, I think that building road back there to Wood Street is doable. And I think it would be a major need for any kind of major project coming in. We don't want to have Elm Street and, and the Elm Street extension overloaded.
Lumber Street extension.
Lumber Street extension overloaded. Um, that said, any project that comes in, as Ken says, they're going to have to have a traffic study done. And traffic study is going to point out there's issues with this. And then they'd have to look at building a road and, which is what happened last year. So.
Right. So we're looking forward as, as, as trying to redevelop this and make it viable. But we also have to look forward to, to, to the traffic aspect first.
But there's, your point is, is nothing specifically saying you probably have to build a road.
Right.
And, um, that's a good point.
Right.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's, Elaine, what are our options from the schedule? We're, we're about halfway done.
Actually, the next three, well, actually, the next three go together. Yeah, the next three go together. And, you know, and you can introduce them.
Let's, uh, let's kind of push forward on this to try to get this done. We've got great attendance tonight. And, you know, and some of the other folks that are on the schedule are going to have to kind of wait a little bit, but we'll try to get to them a little bit. And, uh.
Yeah, one just, why, can you introduce the other three? Sorry, I'm.
Which, which, which other three do we want?
The, the, the next three are the garden, village and, and.
Well, you forgot the sign, sign.
Oh, no, shoot, sign. Okay, I'll come back.
Okay. Let's, let's.
The board can continue to change with the language.
Yeah. Sign by law modifications.
Yeah, okay.
Joe, we'll get to you in a little, about another half an hour. Sorry.
Okay. The, um, sign by law came up because there was a, there's a whole section on sign by law. There was a.
Here's the Cliff Notes version.
Supreme Court ruling that basically said that we can no longer control content of, uh, of signs. And that, uh, one sign is the same as another. Oh, here it is. That's my whole section on sign by law. And, um, so, uh, Ray, Ray sent us down a, um, uh, what we, what we really can and can't do in the sign by law that we passed just last year. And, uh, he, he, he gutted it. Basically, uh, uh, it's, uh, it, it has held us really tight. So we really didn't have much leeway in this coming from, uh, this, this basically, he took our last year's sign by law and, uh, added some legalese to it. And that's what we ended up with.
Okay. Uh, any members of the public want to talk about signs tonight? That won't happen on town meeting floor.
We have the same.
It's real boring, what happened to it.
Well, it's.
You know what I mean? What, it's, it's what, it's what the Supreme Court allows us to do. That's really all we could do.
Is there maybe a couple of examples?
Well, there, there are a couple. I mean, basically what the Supreme Court says, you can't do things on content. So you can't say, before we had like a Realtor sign that we limited to a certain number of Realtor signs or home business signs. And, you know, now it's just the number of signs. And, and, you know, quite frankly, I understand the, what was it? First Amendment, I believe.
First Amendment.
And, uh, I can understand that, but I see practically, it just, it really kind of, and, and we've done a few things in here that probably hurt, but we suspend the number of signs so that during political season, that, you know, some of us can put up every one of our candidates' number of signs that we want to put up. But, uh, it, it just, it just doesn't feel great. But it's going to be one of these that will probably just sell on town meeting floor with kind of grit your teeth and hold, hold it and, and go ahead with it because that's what you're stuck with a lot of it. There is, there is a couple discretionary ones. And one was to limit the number of square feet of a sign on a building from, right now, the formula is one and a half feet per linear foot of a building and it goes down to one. I, I, what, I don't understand, I mean, other than the fact that people want smaller signs, I guess, is the, I, when we did it originally for the one and a half feet, we were envisioning a twenty-foot building section in the middle of downtown. And that puts a sign like that, maybe the signs get brought in a little bit more. But usually on the, I'll say the Ro House downtown, like, like was next to it, the signs are kind of the same height, you know, at one foot, they wouldn't work, but at eighteen inches, they would work. I mean, that's kind of the rationale. I have a, maybe a hard time on that one, just.
Yeah. And then this one, this one, you guys can, feel free to, to, to cut this one wherever you can. I think that that really just came up because there really was, there was so, so little that we, the leeway that we were allowed to have input on this was so small that wherever we could, we sort of did.
There's a few.
Can I go one sort of question after listening to your speech? This doesn't just apply towards permanent signs. This applies to temporary signs? Are there sections in there?
There's some temporary signs and sandwich signs and banners.
Thank you.
Banners and the whole bit. And it's.
Higher given.
It's, 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 signs are, signs were hard to pass a few years ago. They'll be hard to pass at town meeting floor. Let's, let's bring the next three up at once, which is garden apartments, village housing and senior bylaws, which is something the planning board asked to have. So we were kind of.
Yes. Could you introduce those, please?
Yes, I can do that very quick. Basically, if you look at Hopkinton before, about seven, eight years ago, when we had the master plan, we had no apartment complexes. Now we have ten percent of our housing being built in apartment complexes. We had very few garden apartments, which is condos. It was a bylaw term for condos. Now twenty percent of our population's going to be living in, or, or number of units is going to be condos. And basically, the other thing is we have gotten above, um, our ten percent requirement for Mass General Law forty B, which is the Affordable Housing Act. And so the garden apartment bylaw was passed in the past to have a forty B light. Now that we don't have requirement of forty B, we're recommending that we put it on hold until, unless we got below our ten percent. Village housing, um, uh, basically, uh, is very similar to that. That is a hundred percent affordable units, I believe, in village housing. And that still could be built. And then senior housing, um, federal government has basically said that, uh, we can't enforce age-restricted housing. You can't discriminate against us old people or young people. And therefore the town can't discriminate against it. So therefore, people that are building senior housing come before the planning board and say, hey, this is a great project. Go ahead, prove us because we're not going to put any kids in your school. And then a couple years ago, go down the road and they say, oh, by the way, I can't sell it to the old people. There aren't any old people who want to buy this house, but I got this new family that wants to put four kids in the Hopkinton school. Um, and they just bought it. So that's starting to happen. So we're recommending, and Zach recommended, we just, uh, delete the senior housing. So that's the introduction. And probably any comments on that one? I think that one will go through fairly quick in, in town meeting. Cause I think people are.
Don't, don't try and add the word residential though.
Yeah. Frank?
I'm just confused because, um, so we're, we're changing it, taking it out. Uh, anything with age restricted? I was thinking of the conversation we had last year at town meeting about it.
The legacy farms is a little bit different in that there's a host community agreement that might be enforced, might not, if you took it to the same courts that, that said, you know, you can't mess around with age restricted.
Condos can.
Yeah. But the condo association can change their bylaws and let it go. Could. And, you know, we, we tried to write the best thing we could for legacy farms, age restricted. But I think at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's better than, I'll say, somebody coming under our senior bylaw, our housing bylaw, where, you know, they're changing it, you know, and it's happening already. Um, we've lost, well, no, those are affordable units, but what we've, we've, the senior place on Lumber Street, I've heard stories of two or three units have.
That was a long time ago.
And, okay. Other questions? So that takes care of a bunch of them. And we might want to combine those into one bylaw change.
One article.
One article because quite frankly, uh, we've got too many.
No, we're actually pretty good this year. One, two, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, one. About the same.
About the same. Site, site plan bylaw modifications?
An open space, keep it linked together.
Yeah. This is the, adding the, the, the couple of words in talking about the historic structures, I believe.
Do you want to speak to that? It was the historic commission that asked about that. It's simply, we have an existing bylaw, lots with historic structures that allows the planning board to make waivers to, if it'll allow a historic home to be preserved on a site that's being developed. And that, that provision is kind of buried in the back under supplemental regulations. So what we just wanted was under each type of site senior review, that to be called out upfront when people, developers are looking at a site so they're aware of it, um, number one. And number two, that a planning board reviewing it is also aware of it. And if there's a property of significance, they know to ask if this has been considered, if it's feasible. Just put a little more pressure on the developer, particularly upfront in the planning process, to utilize that bylaw if at all possible. So it doesn't add any new requirements. It just puts it upfront to call it to the attention of both the board and the developer.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Elaine, should, should we be closing the public hearing at this point? And then we'll discuss wording at another hearing?
Unless you feel that we may need more input, we can open.
What do people think? Should we leave it open so we can have comments?
Didn't we want to keep it open for the, uh, the Elmwood Park?
Yeah. Okay. So let's, what's our, what's our next meeting?
March fourteenth.
And what time would we have to talk about that?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Well, you have, um, the Haynes Farm subdivision from seven thirty to eight thirty. And then Polte has asked for a significant block of time and they started at eight thirty.
Eight thirty to nine forty-five.
Eight thirty to nine forty-five.
So we could do nine thirty?
You could.
Okay. Look for a continuance of this public hearing until, is it the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
March fourteenth at nine thirty.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? I oppose anyone abstaining motion carries.
I'm glad I didn't have to hack any motions or anything. Here, this is free.
Okay.
Mr. Jim, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the public for, for coming. And, uh, we got other stuff to go, so.
Zach for doing it all.
Thank you. Yes, you guys did a lot of work.
That didn't get in the minutes, I see. Thank you, thank you. Yes, the chairman gushing over all the work that Zach did. Fifteen members this year we had.
Good.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Adam. Joe?
I don't have, I don't think I have another meeting.
Do you need a ride?
No, I don't need a ride. I'll talk somewhere.
Yeah, just give, give me a call. I'll, I'll try and stay local. If this, if, if this, anything stays open this late downtown.
Joe, come on down.
I'll stay with you.
You can stay.
Sure, absolutely. Just public meetings. More than, um, okay, this is eighty-one, eighty-three Main Street.
Right.
A zillion years ago.
Eight.
Eight years ago, uh, we approved a new building on that. And for the members of this board, Joe, maybe you can introduce the building just really quick and then we'll see about extending your, uh, site plan approval.
Um, I'll do it this way.
This is next to the old high school, be kind of by the, at the field there.
This is in between eighty-five Main, which is the old high school, and seventy-seven Main, which is the, um, brick building that, uh, the jewelry store is in. Um, and there is a house on the front. This is the front of the. And there is a house on the front, this is the front of the street, right here, the street. There is a house there, eighty-one Main Street, which is predominant, which is used as an office space at the present time, half leased. And the proposal is to put a building at the back of the lot and have the parking in between, and the approval was given on April eleventh of two thousand and eight.
Claire and I were only members, I think, back...
I think so, at the time. The site plan approval has been extended three times in that period of time, and now is coming up for the fourth request for extension. And the primary reason for the requests for extensions have always been that there's been no economic incentive to build the property because of the lack of enthusiasm for the downtown of Hopkinton. There's always been adequate empty office space that would dictate that this not be built. This last, this last year, has been the first time in eight years that there's been any kind of increase in any development downtown. And it's still a struggle, and it still may not be constructed, because there's so much of a magnetism towards four ninety-five and a magnetism towards the lands that are being available at Western Nurseries, that the downtown is basically being sucked dry of any retail or office use, plus the conversion of offices to electronic, I mean, most people with a computer can go to Starbucks, as somebody said, and set up their office and be there and pay nobody any rent. But having said that, I'm going to go one more round of economic development discussions with the contractors. Rates have gone down as far as borrowing is concerned, that might make it work. But it is the only place that you can place a commercial building in Hopkinton downtown without tear, and you can't tear down the primary building, because there's no parking allowed in front of buildings in downtown, whereas in rural business, you can park in front of a building. So that kind of makes it a difficult development scheme, and we came up with this as the last alternative, so to speak, years ago. And just as a little wrinkle, speaking of, so, signs, I'm going to make a comment about signs after I finish this downtown. But the proposal is to have a two-story or three-story, depending on what we can do economically now, because we may be able to add a third story with keeping the height the same, with an elevator, handicap access, all the parking is within the regulations, everything has, nothing's changed in eight years as far as its conformity. So, and we've tried to keep some green space as required by the bylaw. So I'm looking for another two-year extension on the approval granted in April of two thousand and eight.
Any questions from anyone here?
Procedurally, if it's a one-year extension, for instance, would it, he doesn't get anything done in one year, he had to come back in a year and get another extension? And if it's a two-year extension, if that, is that it, or does he, would still be able to extend it after that?
He could still come back again. There's no limit on the...
There's no difference. I should ask that better.
No, I prefer the two because of the timing that it's going to take to get the financing and the, and the marketing and, and get the property lined up, because it may take some months to get that kind of thing going.
Not that I have any objection to it, I just, since the board makeup, and eight years is a long time, I'm uncomfortable continuing and saying, hold over, hold over, hold over, hold over. I'd rather look at it afresh when you're ready to do it.
I invested close to twenty-five thousand dollars in the original site plan approval.
Right.
And then I would have to do it again.
That was eight years ago, and I understand it, but it's, I'm on the board now, and I think what's going to happen is, eight of the nine members on the board after the next turn will be different. And I just think, it's kind of hard when there's new construction, and it might be nine and a half years since approval, and somebody makes a comment on it, and we notice something, and I think we've got an obligation. I personally, I feel I have an obligation to take a look at something that was approved eight years ago. A lot has happened in town over the time. And not saying any objections to it, I just think it's, it's part of, I personally think part of my responsibility.
Well, then I will speak, having sat on that board, that I do know, we spent a long time with Mr. Sazula on this, with discussions about how fire issues with the building next door, and where parking would fit. I think design, he probably looked at it, he came up with a design that was complimentary to the downtown. We were pleased with the fact that the front building, which has historic value, he was keeping and maintaining and doing a design that complemented the existing building. And, you know, while I understand concerns of more current board members, I can't feel that all the factors that were, that were reviewed extensively by the board at that time and found satisfactory have really changed at all. And I do know that time is money, and I do know the amount of time with engineers and architects and meetings that were put in by both the board and Mr. Sazula, so that I personally don't feel that anything has really changed, nor is there anything that would warrant putting him through this same exercise a second time at a cost, when knowing how this board operates. I don't think the circumstances are any different than what would have been approved today.
Oh, go ahead.
One of my concerns, what triggered it, was you were saying, well, it might now be three stories, which is a change.
Oh, well, that would come back before the board.
Yeah, that would definitely have to, but I have to do an analysis on its construction cost and its square footage, and also the parking that was available.
If I remember right, your parking was getting close, wasn't it?
Well, it was, but it, it conforms either way. We're, we're working on a couple of ideas to make it, to make it work. The dilemma is that the market has changed. What, what, you know, even retail was part of the original thought, and retail just doesn't exist in downtown Hopkinton. There's nobody who wants to come to the downtown area. So it may have to adjust to a different format. Medical use has been, we're all getting older, and more and more of that has happening. So that may be a different marketplace. That's why I need the time to remarket the building. With an approval that's only good now for a couple of more months, it, it wouldn't fly with anybody trying to market it. I'll be happy to make available, you know, the sets of plans, if you wanted to peruse them and, and, you know, so that you can get more familiar with it, that's not an issue. But I would like to get an extension. And it does, I'll say, and Elaine will probably back me up, that nothing in zoning has changed in the eight years that would make this non-conforming or hard to approve for reapproval.
The, I'm going to echo Claire's comments, but also add that in this time, probably the first two times, you got approved just about the time the economy tanked.
Yeah, oh eight, it was just, yeah.
And so, you know, there's a lot of those years where, you know, years where nobody did anything, so.
I am the abutter, by the way, just so you know, at eighty-five. Okay.
So...
I'd like to make a motion that we consider approving a one-year extension, and I'm making this motion because I think that I'd rather see something happen sooner than later. And if it doesn't happen, we can look at it again next, next year. But ten years would be, if you do it for ten, two years, more, it'd be ten years, and that's two terms of anyone on, on the board. And in, in two years' time, Kendall would be the last member from that era, in that century.
No, the top decades, not centuries.
I know you put a lot of work into downtown, and I know you put a lot of volunteering into the town. I just, I'd like to see something happen sooner rather than later, and if you can leverage that with the banks, and, you know, this is, we got a year extension, we'd like to make this happen, you give them some incentive to act quicker.
Is there a second for his motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion, this is a one-year extension?
So can I ask, if we were to vote down the one-year extension, could we then vote for a two-year extension?
Yes. Or you could, or you could offer an amendment to that motion for making it two-year. And we'll vote on the amendment first.
Well, I would like to offer an amendment that it be a two-year extension, because I don't think that Mr. Sazula's, I don't even want to use the word failure to build the building. Not building the building is, is a manner, is a matter of negligence or lack of due diligence that he needs to be prodded. It's a matter of the current business environment, which we all understand, and we are trying to encourage commerce in our town and not, not punish people who, you know, are, are victims of the economic circumstances right now.
Right, to Claire's point, it's not a matter of if they, if we build it, they will come, because they're not coming. So if they come, then we build it.
Okay, is there, is there a second for Claire's amendment?
Second.
Okay, so now we're discussing the amendment.
So to that point, um...
Two versus one year, I think, is the argument.
I, I'm saying one year, not as punishment, just as, if it goes two years, how many, we're not all going to be on the board in two more years, some people's terms are ending, and some people are leaving the board, and who knows? I think that if we keep it one year, it's something he can go to the bank with and say, I've been extended for one year, and I'd like to make this happen within a year. If it doesn't happen, we're here to consider it next year. I'd rather see something happen sooner than later, and then, and not to criticize Mr.'s situation anyway, but there was a change downtown at Hitchings Hardware that got changed into a laundromat, a drag there. So businesses do come in, and they do succeed downtown, and businesses in your other buildings are succeeding. So it, I, it's a matter of, you're playing on a bigger scale than some of the other players in, in the mix, and I appreciate that, but I'd like to see something happen sooner, that's why I said one year, not, not to be punitive or anything, just to...
Let me, let me make the argument against, or for the two-year. It takes a while to get it. It's a marketing, it's a bank extension, it's setting up contractors, it's, I, I think we, you know, limited, I mean, and the argument that the board is going to be different, and therefore, things are different, I think the board sets up things that last for a long time. And, you know, the approval that people that made, you know, before I was on the board, yeah, we're living with those, and we're enforcing them, and it's part of the, the deal. So I don't have a problem with you guys eventually taking over from me and, and maybe doing it better, I hope better, but, so I don't know. I think the two-year is, is the request before us, and, and I support the two-year. But...
I agree. I think two years is appropriate.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I think we're ready to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of changing the main motion to two years versus one, say aye.
Aye.
So that's one, two, three, four. All those opposed, two. And I think that guts, there's no abstentions. So, okay, now we're voting on the main motion, which is a two-year extension. All those in favor, are there further discussion? I don't think we need it, okay. Vote on the main motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
No.
No?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, and we got an abstention, some motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Joe.
The only, I wanted to make one comment, because I happen to be noticing the bylaw change on the signage.
Yeah.
And I, and one of the, and I had a discussion with the building zoning officer a couple of weeks ago about signage. Part of the problem with downtown is that these buildings do not conform like other parts of the community, where they build them from scratch. So for instance, with this building, for instance, and with the old high school building, they're set back from the street considerably from what you would choose to do today, where you don't have a parking lot in front of the building. And therefore, signage on them is further away from anybody. So by going from one point five to one, we did some numbers on it, and I have sixteen thousand square feet in that old high school building and twelve tenants. I can't get signage on the building that will conform to anything you could read from the street at one foot per square for the frontage, because I have a hundred, I have a hundred square, a hundred linear feet of frontage of the building, and so that's a hundred and fifty square feet of signage divided by, let's round it off to ten, so that's fifteen square feet per, per tenant. Even though I don't want to plaster signs on the front of that building, because it would destroy its aesthetics, it's the only way I can advertise people that are in the building, and I'm not getting tenants because of lack of signage. The other one, the, the change also, that you're not going to allow directory or other signs, because I've resisted putting signs in the parking lot and other places to tell people who's in the building because of the aesthetics. But quite frankly, the economics of today's time is going to require me to start doing that, because I can't get tenants to come in who don't have signage, because they can get it at other places in town where they can have a sign. I just talk somebody into it and give them a significant rent decrease to get them to come from Lumber Street to downtown for a real estate office, because there's no signage. So this is an issue that I think that is going to be detrimental, these changes, for the downtown district. I don't know about the other parts, but, so I'll, I'll make my comments to you, you know, I'll send you an email or a letter.
That would be great.
And talking about that. But thank you for your time.
Just a clarification, so you have a suggestion, and you're talking about both buildings or all the buildings, where, because I thought I saw like a directory of the newer building.
There is a, there's a directory, but it fits into the thirty-four square feet of a freestanding...
The freestanding sign.
The bigger the building, the more impotent the sign is. The smaller the building, the more it can have some space for everybody, because eighty-one Main, for instance, only has four tenants, so you take that thirty-four square feet divided by four, and you've got something you can see. You've got a building that's sixteen thousand square feet, and you put it into thirty-four square feet of signage, and you can't see it.
Got it.
So these are all things that are, the, what do I call it? Downtown is bleeding from a thousand cuts. It's all kinds of small things that when you add them up, don't make it competitive to other parts of town.
If you have a suggestion that would...
I, I will, well...
Please, please send them in.
I'll chit chat with our, with the building department, because we're working on some ideas that we may be able to put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Strassel?
I'll see them.
I'll see them. Come on, come on.
You're in.
We're only running a little bit late, sorry. Okay, this has to do with, informal discussion to talk about making a private road a public road, and then also whether or not a retention pond might be able to be removed.
Right. The town asked me to fix two manholes on the project, number one and number two, and I said I would, and hopefully, they're holding a bond on me from when they put the holding pond in twenty-one years ago, twenty-two years ago. And they're still holding the money, and I want that good review released, so I can at least pay for the repairs of the, of the two manholes. Now, when I purchased this land twenty-one years ago, I had plans of having six building lots, and I got five building lots. The sixth one, they refused, because they said, you need a holding pond. Now, it's been twenty-two years, and there hasn't been a drop of water that's settled in that area, and that's a one point six acre area, and I was wondering if they could release one acre of it, so I can have a one acre building lot and leave the other point six with a holding pond, if it's, if it's necessary. You don't really need it. Twenty-two years doesn't prove a point, and I know what does. You don't really need it. 22 years doesn't prove a point, and I don't know what does. Excuse my voice.
Let's, um, let's bring these up like one at a time. Let's talk about the detention pond. Elaine, if, if we were to consider that, we would want another engineering study, and you'd be also meeting current wetlands stud, or stormwater studies or requirements.
Another one?
The, the stormwater has changed in 22 days.
Actually, subdivisions are grandfathered under the regulations under which they were approved, so the new stormwater regulations probably wouldn't apply.
Okay.
But the calculations that were done that determined that this drainage system needed a detention pond would have to be, I mean, there was, obviously, there was some science that resulted in this, and somebody would have to do that again.
It was, it was a firm in, in Hudson, I believe it was. Don't know-
So, so you, you know, the applicant would have to hire an engineer to review the, the drainage for the subdivision and explain why the detention pond is no longer needed, and then there's pipes going there, so where's the water going to go that's coming down the road? So have to take a whole new look at the subdivision.
There's no water in it.
And then we might-
Well, I don't know where it goes.
It never collected any water in 22 years. I checked it every week, dry as can be.
So, so somebody would take a look at that and say, isn't it-
Maybe the water's going across the street.
Or maybe it's not built properly.
Yeah. All right, so, so before we consider the detention pond, as, we'd want another engineering study of, of it to, you know, and if the engineers say that it can work, and then, you know, there'll be our peer review with our engineer checking that engineer, you know, maybe I'm talking for all of us, but, you know, if, if, if the engineering works, then we don't care, do we?
No.
I mean, I mean, that, that aspect of it. Uh, uh, let me, let me address the next one, which was the making it an acceptance as a public way. Uh, in order to make it a public way, it would have to be at public way standards at the time. Now, or, you know, before us to accept it, we, we, I won't say we want it new and pristine, but we want it up to standards.
Okay, well, that's, well, that's what the town told me. To get it up to standards, you have to fix, uh, one and two.
The, the two manholes.
Yeah.
And, and, but I don't know whether or not, when the board approved it 20-something years ago, whether because it was a private way, we, we let it go with a smaller paving or, I, you know, you know, the same engine, the same-
I wasn't aware of, of an appeal, since I'm an ironworker. I have, I know nothing about that.
So the same engineer that talks to you about the detention pond can probably advise you as to whether or not the road-
I don't think he's in troops. Is he still around?
Oh, yeah, in troops, yeah. Troops?
He's the one that, uh-
He's a surveyor.
Surveyor. There's two surveys in town.
And it needs to be a street acceptance plan, and the board would need to reverse its 1992 decision to-
But, but we wouldn't do any of that without an engineering review that says that what is out there is done. There might even be a, some sampling to make sure the pavement's, you know, of the correct thickness. I, you know, I, you know, we go, with these, with these private streets, we get ourselves into trouble almost every time. There's, there's days that I, I almost think we should, should never do it, because-
Should never have been a private street.
Because we get into this, this, this thing after 20 years.
Yeah, there's a, there's a big strip of grass on both sides of the road, and I've cut that grass so many times, sick and tired of it. And I'm getting, I'm not getting any younger.
Uh, none of us are.
I mean, I'm good for another 10, 15 years, or more.
I hope you're good for much more than that. Uh, let's see. Now, the last one was the bond removal. Why would we still have this bond?
Uh, the, uh, bond was retained to guarantee the street trees, and at the couple of times it was, was brought up in, uh, years past, the board just never authorized its release.
Yeah, that's because they put the wiring underground in that area, so it was, it was no good.
So tree-wise, we're okay, or at this point, we, do we care?
I don't think anyone cares.
So-
Shouldn't we hold on to it in case there are, and we do take over the street, that we need to make repairs and use it for repairs? Is that the idea?
I, I think it, I think at least our, my procedure for the vote is, before I would accept it and recommend it to town meeting to approve it, it's got to be up to speak. You know, that's a nonstarter. So if it, it isn't, if it ain't fixed, it stays the way it is. You know, and, and we, we, we delegate that to our engineer, to, you know.
Okay, but I'm, I'm willing to fix it, but I need, I need the, uh, the money from the bond, which-
We, we'll get to that, right? That's what we're getting. And, and I'm not sure, to make it clear, that just fixing the manholes, that'll make it so that the guys are happy to plow it, but I am not sure that that fixes it, fixes it to the extent that it is acceptable as a public way. I mean-
What happened last year when we had all that snow, I had, I put in eight huge boulders on the curve coming in.
Yeah.
And the plow knocked them home. So I went to the, to the, uh, the plow people-
Yep.
And explained the situation, and they put them all back.
Mm-hmm.
But the, and the road, the road's good, except for those two manholes.
Okay, well, that, that's something the, the engineers and the DPW folks, and, you know, right now, the current policy, I believe, is they're not plowing private streets, so you, you, you know.
Well, he has been.
Yep.
For 22 years.
So you've been doing-
It's the grandfather, cause it's snowing.
You hope, you hope. Uh, so, yeah, so, uh, is there, I, I'm hearing a recommendation that we release the, the performance guarantee of $4,000?
It's a little bit more than a second. Is that a motion, Ken?
Yeah, is it 4,000? Is that the amount?
It's 4,000.
I think it's something-
Plus interest? Okay, how about just a motion to release the performance guarantee in its entirety?
Okay, that's-
So, well-
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Discussion, because when I was reading the, um, letter that he wrote, uh, I had a different view of it than what we're talking about now. And I just like to see where it says, in black and white, that it's just for the trees. Not that I doubt you guys, um, but, one of us were here in 1992. Um, I'm just concerned about repair costs that were, might be taken on in the future.
That was Reagan, truck, the tree people, Reagan.
Yeah, so in the, in the subdivision filed, there's a, uh, an indication of what the board voted that the last time they reduced the amount, and the only item that they retained funds for was for the street trees.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna move that then. Thanks.
So I think we're ready for a vote on releasing the entire performance bond. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay, so we got one out of the three in you, and the other two, you got to pass to do it, but it's going to probably cost some engineering money to, to get there.
Well, it cost me $30,000 to put in the holding pond.
Well, if, if, if you can get an engineer that, that says we don't need it, then you're in great shape. But-
Maybe the hydrology has changed with the development.
It, it, I don't know. I mean, if it's dry, you know, maybe it's going across the street, which is pretty wet.
And that didn't come from nowhere. Some engineers saw need it at some point.
I, I-
And that came, the water that's across the street came from the backwoods.
Got it.
Which is the way, the way in the holding pond.
Because you're on a hill. Ossie Hill's a bit of a slope. Does the water flow down? When, when it rains hard, the water comes down the road. Where's it go?
Okay.
Down the road.
Okay.
Hey, there's a, there's a couple of manholes.
Oh, it goes into the cash base.
Okay, let's, um, okay, let's go. Uh, let me get, get through a few things, and then, Roy, we're going to spend some time with, with you.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Okay, let's get all the cats and dogs, and then, then we'll, we'll, we'll leave us with, uh, everything else here. The first thing is, um, approval not required plan for School Street. What are we doing again with this one?
Oh, we have a gentleman here.
Oh, okay. Oh.
I'm Rod Carter, 15 Pleasant Street in Upton. I'm a land surveyor. I, Rod Carter Associates out of Upton. Um, this is for Dick Amato on the west side of School Street, East Street. And the Upton Planning Board has signed already, and there's two milars, one for Middlesex and one for, uh, Worcester. Uh, the little piece of Hopkinton is here. There's a, there's two lots that he's cutting his farmland out, and this is going to be dealt with later by somebody else. Um, this is the Hopkinton piece, town line. This is where they're developing across the street at, uh, whatever that's called, across the street, um, uh, West Main Street, Water Tower here, Walnut Street. So that's it, basically, is an A&R plan where we're, it involves you guys, although it's not, um, you got to have 200 feet of frontage, and you only have 18399 frontage left over in the Hopkinton side. So-
Does that mean it's not a building lot in Hopkinton?
It's all going to be-
It's all part of one.
Yeah, all part of one.
How does that work when you have frontage in two towns?
They'll probably build in Upton.
He'll eventually come to you again.
He'll put the bedrooms on the Hopkinton side of the line.
It's on the west side?
Yeah, here's the town line here, and it comes over and then back like that. So Hopkinton, Upton.
Can you point out where the construction is, again?
No construction. He's just cutting out his farmland that's there. Um, and he just included the remainder of it here.
Which happens to be in Hopkinton.
Which happens to be in Hopkinton, yeah. It's not, nothing, it's just-
It's, it's entitled for endorsement. Look for, for a letter to sign the, the plan.
It's two, two, two.
Motion. So moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. And we need two signatures on each plan.
Although, the one that goes to, I would do five, because one of them's going to Worcester County, and they don't have a record of needing two.
Okay.
And we need a different plan.
Can you do them all?
Okay.
A little bit better. There we go.
Okay, the next thing we got to get done tonight is we need to vote to submit all the articles to the annual town meeting warrant. We're not submitting actual words, we're just holding places for them at this point. Um, we also have a couple other articles, so let's, let's do the zoning ones first. All the zoning that we had a subject to the hearing earlier, uh, putting those, those on the map, which is 10 articles, maybe we'll group them, so we'll have a few less. Did you get enough signatures? No?
Got three.
Three.
So who else? You three?
No, sorry.
Okay.
So basically, uh, look for a motion to put the 10 zoning articles, maybe consolidate the, the house, the housing together, and the site plan too, together. So moved and seconded. Let's see, how many of our, do I have to wait till we get a couple more members in the board? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, geez, I'm looking right in front.
Me? No, I'm not really here.
Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. And we need one more.
Which side am I signing here? We all signed on the right-
On the right side.
The right side.
Date is-
22, 22.
2/22, 2/16. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, okay, so, other art, other articles per Elaine's memo, street acceptances of a bunch of other older roads. The street discontinuance of Peach Street and portion of Franklin Street, uh, no longer needed. Authorize the town to dispose of land that was once constituted Peach Street and Franklin Road. Accept a gift of sidewalk easement on East Main Street to allow off-road portions of the sidewalk extension from recreational parcel to Legacy Farms Road North. And accept an easement potentially of 91 West Main Street for right turn on Lumber Street. Right now, we haven't got that done yet, but we need a placeholder.
Compliment?
Yes. Uh, accept gifts of land for Conley Hills subdivision, accept a gift of land on, on Hilltop Road. And so there's seven other articles to go for.
Mr. Cherry?
Yeah.
Roger Mesut, and I are working on, uh, in response to Elaine's request, a survey for the planning board for Conley. We should have that relatively soon.
Okay, so you're working on both Peach and Franklin Roads, and then also for the sidewalk on East Main Street?
Right.
So we can finish that sidewalk portion. Great. Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the street discontinuance of Peach and portions of Franklin, Mr. Mesut's here, is that, that is not the piece of Franklin that is going to change Mr. Mesut's address? Are you still going to be on Franklin Road? Is it just-
As far as I understood it.
So the portion of Frank, where's the portion of Franklin that's being discontinued?
I think, actually, I think what we're really talking about is the portion of Franklin and Peach that were being abandoned and the relocation.
And the relocation.
It was shifted over.
Okay.
It basically adds to Roger's front yard, part of this.
Right, but he's, he, his home is a historic home, and it was historically Franklin Road, and that, that's not going to change.
Well, that's up to the selectmen. I think they-
They already voted to change the name of-
That part of Franklin goes, goes, gets to Legacy North, I believe.
It becomes Legacy North.
So that old Singletary Homestead is no longer going to have a Franklin Road address, it's going to be called?
I think they voted a few years ago.
Yeah.
Wasn't that-
Yeah, I don't know about the selectmen. At the town meeting, I don't remember.
The Franklin Road address for the house.
That's what's stored in my mailbox.
It's, it, it, whether it's discontinued or not is, is not material to the name. It's, the road shifted over, so it's the land where Franklin Road used to be. So it's, so what's Franklin Road now? It's the subdivision plan that the planning board approved. It shifted over.
One of the things we're asking the town to do also, a town meeting, is the abandoned way where Peach and Franklin used to be, we're proposing that part of that get deeded to us and part of it get deeded to Roger. Sort of a land swap, if you will. We'll get you all the details on that.
Yeah. Well, right tonight, we're just kind of making sure we have placeholders for it, and we want to expect the engineering to be done in a relatively timely manner so we can keep going. If not, we'll pull it in another month. So anyway, I'm looking for a motion to add other articles, one through seven.
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to add one more article that we should put add on to it, and it's actually a potential zoning article. And the only reason I'm adding it today is just as a placeholder. If we need to add expanded uses for the athletic parcel, example to try to get the athletic or the, uh, Marathon Center as a allowable use on that property. Uh, I know we haven't created any wording for that and we'll probably have to have another public hearing on that, but, uh, I think we should develop, there is a meeting that Elaine is attending for me on Wednesday and Roy is gonna be there, I believe, with the town manager and the selectmen to talk, and Parks and Rec to talk about that. We're trying to get a pathway so that there isn't a, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, in, uh, speaking for Legacy Farms, we would be very supportive of that.
That's great. I mean, I think this board is, you know, when, when they pitched the Marathon Museum item, everyone was pretty much in favor of, of that whole item and, uh, I know they got good response at the Selectmen's, but right now, it's legally, it couldn't go on that athletic parcel. So, uh, anyway, I'm looking for a separate, or a motion to add that to our list of zoning articles.
I motion that we have a placekeeper article for the recreational lot for the use of a museum or otherwise.
Okay.
We wouldn't need that language in March.
Very, and, and I'm gonna delegate that part to you, Elaine, to, to work on some de, some language.
Flesh it out a little bit more.
Yeah. So, we've got a motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, let's, let's get this other business done so we can get the rest of this stuff. So, the peer review services contract, basically, I think Elaine put it in your package. It's been two years with Beta, three, and that was a three-year contract, so it's time to, to put it out to bid one more time. And, um.
The services that we are in there are the same as last time. We just add a little bit, um, of a paragraph in there so that they could, just general engineering for the planning board now that you do have a little bit of funding.
And the other business, I don't know, their planning board members are aware, Phil Paradise's ship has gone to another firm. As of like this week or something?
Yeah, just recently.
So, so Phil.
So if we stay with Beta, we won't have Phil as our principal guy.
Correct. They've already assigned, I'm trying to remember.
They're still working on who to assign. Right now, Ken Ho is our contractor.
Where did he go? Where did he go?
The name escapes me, but it's the president of a, an engineering firm.
It's a small, I think it's a, it gets a couple man type spot.
But it's, it's a good opportunity.
Okay. So, do you need anything other from us to send this bid document out? Okay. Um, approve the minutes, look for a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th to 2016. Are there any comments first?
I have comments. Um, I, I, first I motion that we approve the minutes. Uh, I do have some comments on, on some of the things we have that conflict in the minutes, not from what was written, but from what we said, so, um.
So you, you, you willing, you wanna approve the minutes as written?
As written, cause we, we.
Okay.
Said one thing and we did another. I'll point out where.
I hear a second. Does anyone have any other changes to those minutes? If not, let's have a second. Okay. Further discussion on minutes of, of January 11th, 2016, for approving them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, now they entertain a motion to approve the minutes for January 25th, 2016.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. And just quickly.
Quickly. Uh, in, in the note, in the minutes, we said that we were not gonna vote on the Leonard Street project unless we had written agreements from, until we got written agreements from the neighbors and we had never heard, uh, from the neighbor to the, uh.
That's because they changed the project so that they didn't need written agreements. When they shifted it over.
They shifted it to where the land that came from the neighbors and the neighbors never.
Did the neighbors, they, they redesigned it so they didn't need it.
Off, off the neighbor, Alex, whatever his name is.
That's correct.
But we haven't seen anything from Alex excepting that and we voted on it after saying we wouldn't do that without seeing any writing, agreements. And it was a last minute change again, we voted on something without having all the information.
No, I, I disagree entirely on that because everything that he's doing is within the right of way and therefore it was correct what we did. The original plan that we did, when you see that on that minutes, we had work being done on the neighbor's property, which required an easement.
Sure.
But it, when they shifted the roadway to the west, that took care of that problem.
But the road is barely wide, was wide enough as it was, then how did they get the extra space, the extra foot and a half to do that? I don't.
They, they got it.
They're just trying to have it closer to.
To the Alex's property from Alicia's property, so if it's on.
They shifted, they shifted the road. There's a slight bend in it, if my memory is correct. Go look at it, you'll see that the road is all on the right of way.
They were trying to work with the catch base and it was on her property, but that wasn't possible, so they shifted it away from that and it's still within the right of way.
Right.
All within the right of, right of way?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we, we got a Trails Club correspondence. They were asking about trails on Legacy Farms Road South. Elaine, maybe you and Roy can put a kinda response together for that. You take the lead on it. I think they asked two or three questions. I'd like to make sure we get a response to, to the Trails Club on that. Then, well, we also got a quote from Beta to do the engineering on the Lumber Street corner and quite frankly, the quote was way too high. We will be looking at, for somebody else to, to probably, we'll, we'll bid that. I mean, they'd given us a preliminary estimate of, I wanna say 10% of the overall estimate of the work and they were at 30 or 40%. You know, I mean, it was just like, what do you mean? I mean, it was just, uh, we're looking for something simple, but, uh, they didn't, they, they were not pricing it that way. It's probably a good thing to let them know about that at the same time that we're sending out the bids, so they understand that pricing is key to the board. Okay.
Continue the Pulte's public hearing.
Motion to continue the Pulte's public hearing for the, to March 14th at 2000, or, or, at, at what time?
Eight thirty.
At eight thirty.
So moved.
Do I hear a second again? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, we did that. Um, let's see, let's, let's talk about the land covenants for the municipal parcel first. That one, I think, is all in order from what we're hearing from Ray, et cetera. Elaine, am I, am I, I'm not confusing me?
He did email to that effect today.
Okay, and, and that is the form that we had in the special permit. So, I think we're all set on, on that property. Any questions from members of the board? Okay, I guess I'd entertain a motion to.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm a little late to this conversation.
No, go.
Um, is this a proposal to, for the town to get the piece of property?
Yes, this, this is to transfer the municipal parcel, which is on Wilson Street, uh, which was part of the original legacy.
Okay, so.
This is the.
No, this is, this is someone behind it.
This is the, how many acre parcel? Twenty-one acres. It's kinda the rocky wet stuff up along Wilson Street.
Is that part of, part of that property where some trails may go?
Up to the town.
Trail plan, I don't think it goes through there.
I think it probably could.
My own question might be for future uses because, um, I'm Jane Moran on East Bane Street, but I'm also a member of the Upper Trails Trail Committee and some of the conversation from the trails, from the, you know, trails has been, um, what if the trails do get developed or wanna be developed further on down the line? And I know under the, um, current agreement, Legacy is responsible for building, maintaining, repair and all that. What happens to that part of the agreement if the town takes full ownership?
Well, if we take ownership of that parcel, then we'd be responsible for maintaining the trail on that. I mean, we, we're the property owner.
Or building the trail or doing anything.
I, I believe, right?
I think so.
And, and at the end of the day, you hold the restriction on the land on that? Is that how that one works?
I, actually, I think the restriction is a recorded document that restricts you from what you can do with it. It's actually, it was pretty well drafted by Ray a number of years ago.
Yeah. So that one, that is the same as what we negotiated with the master plan special permit.
So I guess my question would be going down the road future, instead of going and asking Roy, Roy for cooperation to getting some of these trails built, we would be then asking the town?
You'd be asking the selectmen for, if you wanted to cross that particular piece of property and as.
Also the cost.
What?
And also the cost for building and maintaining.
Sure, but C, uh, CPC funds, I believe, could be used for that trail. Uh, and then other trail funds too that are coming to the town. The.
I just wanted to bring that up to make it.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, all good questions, Jane. All good questions. As far as I have heard, I have heard no other municipal uses for that piece of property. I mean, at one point Claire looked at cemetery lots, not gonna happen. Uh, you know, it doesn't work for a school, it doesn't work for a fire station, it doesn't work for, I, I don't know what else you could.
Hotel, it's a good spot for a hotel.
Probably doesn't work so well for a hotel off of Wilson Street and probably.
Unless at some point we could move things around. I mean, I don't know how binding the current, current, the current covenant is that, you know, at a different point, if a different piece of land adjacent to the athletic parcel made more sense and that turned into open space, that might happen.
It.
Depending on what happened on the athletic.
I mean, this is.
Little dog care facility.
You'll get care.
You could, you could put potentially an animal shelter on, or, whatever we, we're, animal shelter, animal shelters, I guess the proper, I mean.
We have some dry areas on that.
I, they would fit in with the coyotes very well.
Okay. I mean, you know, if that, you know, that might, that might be another, depending on what else is there. I don't.
Okay, thank you.
None of that was restricted with your, your deal with, whatever source?
No, not at all.
Okay. So, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to, to, to approve the restricted land covenant for the municipal parcel. I think that's what I'm trying to do, right? Okay.
So moved.
Moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. I guess I, I, I. Okay, I'll give you a second here.
A short minute. Go back to all these notes. Okay, this is section four, Tom LaLa. Uh, can you help me with this one?
You're okay?
This is the covenant for the land that.
Yes. Did you have a copy of that?
Is that what this is, it was on our desk today? Glazed this letter.
That you need to fix up.
Yeah. Okay, so that's this one that's here. So, basically, there's Ray saying he's satisfied with that, so, okay. So we have a motion in front of us for the municipal parcel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, for the, the other one, that one's got a bunch of changes. I haven't had a chance to read it, cause it was on my, my thing.
We just got it today.
We just got it today. Um, I wanna make sure that the Marathon Museum fits in the four corners of that and I'm assuming that it does somehow or somehow.
I had a long discussion today with Ramirez, with my counsel, and the clean document, I don't know if you have the clean one, but I gave you two copies of the clean one if you'd like. Ray said this is the version that he thinks you should go with. He said that it doesn't address the potential for a museum, nor can it at this stage because of what's been currently approved by town meeting. He said, what you have to do is, if you, if you approve this, we transfer to the town, the town records it, takes possession and then it goes through the process of dealing with, if you wanna do a museum, may very well have to go back to town meeting. For sure, you'll have to revise the master plan special permit in order to achieve that.
Okay.
Separate and distinct from, from this document.
Okay, with all that, that's more complicated than I wanna do tonight.
I agree.
You agree?
I agree.
Good.
Sorry, I'm tired.
You're tired? Oh, okay.
I'm confused.
Let's put that one off. I wanna talk to Ray more about it. Okay? Uh, and then, the last thing we've got on here is the master plan special permit. Elaine, you wanna give us a date for, that we can continue that to?
The earliest it could be moving March 28th.
Uh, at what time?
Uh, totally open, so it could be Thursday.
Seven thirty? Request of, of a motion to continue the public hearing for the master plan special permit for age-restricted units to March 28th, seven thirty. So moves.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Thank you all for sitting through a long meeting tonight and I think we got a lot done, particularly with the articles for, for town meeting and that's a key thing. Last thing I wanna leave you with is, those of you who don't have your master plan special permit done, or no, your, the master plan section done, master plan section done, you're late.
It's gonna be reappearing on the agenda.
And, and, and we're gonna embarrass those that don't have it done by the middle of Not that you guys could be embarrassed anyway. This is.
Cancel tomorrow evening.
Well, and we will cancel tomorrow, cause we got through everything finally. And it did not snow.
It is going to snow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. Okay. So, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Have a good one.